Start with the roll call, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, Chairperson Laurel Ross.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Robert Miller.
Present.
Committee Member Scott Sims.
Present.
Committee Member Gus Douglas.
That would be me.
Committee Member Kim Bean.
Here.
Committee Member Paul Dillman.
Here.
And Committee Member Margot Orf.
Here.
All righty. All right, the next is the invocation. Is there anyone that would like to offer an invocation at this point?
Sure, I'm a chaplain. Excellent, I appreciate that.
Our dear sweet heavenly Father, we thank you for this time. We pray that all the business that we conduct will be pleasing to you and that the people that are have been nominated, that we choose the person that you would like to be honored. We thank you for all of our blessings and especially for our city and our country. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so am I required to do the gavel at the beginning or no?
No.
No ma'am.
Okay.
As long as you started off with the roll call, we're all good.
Okay, agenda changes.
If you need people's attention, you do that.
Well, if it's loud in here. Any agenda changes that anyone has, any additions?
No ma'am.
Nothing? I have two things that I don't know if they can be put with something else or if we if I need to make it a change or an addition. One is Festival of the Arts, I had a question on. Okay. And then the 2026 meeting dates, just want to kind of have a little discussion on that if we could.
Of course, we can either talk about it during reports if you'd like, just since they're two simple, very, very simple questions.
Okay.
Or if you'd like to add it as an item, we can do that as well.
Whichever is most appropriate.
It does not matter. If you'd like to have it solidified as an item, we can happily add it. Would you like it just as an item, like for questions in regards to discussion, or would you like it just as a report?
We're going to discuss.
Okay.
So does that make sense? Does that tell you where it needs to be? You have a question?
If we do it under reports, we just make a motion, seconded, and it becomes part of the record as it would, or should actually like setting the date or the other thing that you mentioned?
Yeah, if since if you're wanting to make a motion in relation to it to solidify it, we can add it as an item.
Just make sure I do it right.
I just want to make sure it counts when we do it.
Well, yeah, and so we'll we'll add it as an item so that if there is a motion underneath it, it'll just be set. So if if one of you guys wants to make a motion to add an item for like just discussion topics, we can out add it as a separate item onto the minutes. And then if there's any motions underneath that, it'll be noted in the minutes as well.
Okay, so by me asking for that, do I need to make a motion?
Sure, yeah, just to have it solidified.
I'd like to have the Festival of the Arts and 2026 meeting dates added to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to add those two. Thank you. Beautiful. Um, do we have any awards and presentations today? Are we going to do the, I think we have the the banner presentation later in the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so no other awards. Informational agenda, public input, is there any public input today right here?
You're doing a good job.
Oh. All right, so consent agenda on item 300. This was the meeting that we did not have enough people for. The minutes were put out saying that, and then it was rescheduled for the following Tuesday. Do we have to take a motion to approve it or just?
If you'd like, you can do a whole motion for the consent agenda, since it was, you know, two, there are two meeting minutes in there. If you guys have any changes you would like to do, please let me know. But as long as you're, you know, in consensus, we can easily do a motion for both of them together.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, no one had any corrections to either of the, the, okay, the minutes that went out.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, all right. Publics hearing agenda, regular agenda, Veteran Banner Program update.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Hannah Kirsch. I am the Recreation and Events Manager for the city, and I am here today speaking on behalf of our Administrative Director, Brian Donegan, and our Communications Director, Matt Reeser. And I am presenting the update for the Veteran Banner Program that you all recommended to our commission, and the city staff has gone over it to provide some updates, which we will be detailing today.
Sorry, is that a full difficulty?
A battery?
No, it's not plugged in.
Thank you, Tristan. Nope. Oh, yeah, there we go. All right, so the program overview. The City of Winter Springs Veteran Banner Program honors local veterans by displaying commemorative banners alongside designated city streets on the right way of streetlights. This annual initiative recognizes the service and sacrifice of Winter Springs residents who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces. Banners are displayed each year from early January through early June, and banners may be renewed each year for an additional fee.
Keep going, Hannah.
Okay, so for the program cost, the initial banner fee for this is going to be $200. This would include the design approval, banner production, installation, and removal. The renewal fee for if someone wants to renew it year to year is going to be $100 per year. This would include the banners being stored by the city and reinstallation fees. So to detail a little bit of the key roles and responsibilities for this program, we have organized it into three different staffing roles. Our program administrator would be myself, so that would be the Recreation and Events Manager. Their job would be to oversee operations, coordinate with the applicants, and manage the scheduling of when the banners are being produced, when the applications are going out, when installation would occur, and when banners would be taken down, as well as ensuring that the Parks Manager is storing them properly. The design and communications of the banner would be done by our Communications Director, in this case, Matt Reeser. He creates the banner, designs, ensures branding compliance, and promotes the program on city social media, websites, et cetera. Our Installation Coordinator would be our Parks Manager, who would oversee the installation, the removal, and the storage of our banners with maintenance staff on site. Now, for today, I wanted to detail a little bit of what the application process would look like for you. So we do have two ways of applying. One way would be with a credit card payment. The other two ways would be with cash or.
Check.
Check, thank you. Completely blank, thank you. So this would be for a credit card. This information is found on our city website. So if one was to go into book any sort of reservation, facility fee, this is usually where all of our online registration processes go. This is where one would find the egg hunt event. This is where one would find a pavilion rental, things like that. We try to keep it all on one page for you. So you'll see kind of the arrow up at the top, right here, the Winter Springs Veteran Banner Program. One would click that. They would be sent to this page, and they would be able to add it to their cart right here for you. And this is where, once added to the cart, what it would look like. And these are the current questions that we have for it. So the questions would indicate as follows, and this is not set in stone, so any recommendations that you might have, we are welcome to. We added questions, please provide your full name, please select the option that best matches your relationship with this veteran, I confirm that the Winter Springs resident address currently listed on my account is accurate, what is your current email address and phone number, what is the veteran's full name as it should appear on the banner, which military branch did this veteran serve, what was the highest rank in service, how many years of service did this veteran have, how or has this veteran received any awards or commendations? And I certify that the information provided is accurate and all required documents are included. I understand that submission does not guarantee banner installation until it is approved and payment is received. Once all of these questions are answered, and they are required to have some sort of answer in here, you're able to click Submit Responses, and you are then directed to our waivers page. This is our photo slash video release, and all you would need to do is simply check I agree on behalf of, and then this would be dependent on the applicant applicant's name, and then you would click Confirm Waiver Agreements here, and then you would simply sign. Then you would be transferred over to our payment page, and again, this is only for a credit card, where you would click Continue to Payment. Your information for your credit card would appear, and you would be able to complete the transaction just like any online shopping. Yes.
Whoever whoever is going to make a recommendation for someone, they would include the $200 amount with the application then. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So everyone, if two or three people make the applicant, the submissions, they would each, they would each put, send in the 200, and that would be the processing fee the city would would use to to make the the form, I mean, to make up the banner.
Yes.
Okay.
I have several questions, but I want you to finish.
Yeah, of course.
Let's go, do you want me to ask them along the way or?
Totally fine, however you guys want to do it.
Let's let you finish.
Perfect.
Yeah, I have several questions. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay.
And then for the application process, once payment is collected, the Recreation and Event Manager will be notified if it's done over credit card, so I would receive an email right away that states that someone submitted an application and the process was paid, then I would be able to reach out to them directly. Then from there, I would be able to collect the proof of residency from that applicant as well as proof of military service. For an application that's done with a check or cash, this process would all be done through myself. So they would be able to schedule a time with me either on the phone or in person at City Hall, and we would be able to do that same process just in person and handle cash or check towards the end of that transaction. And at that time, they would also provide me their proof of residency as well as proof of military service. The photos would need to be sent to the city staff by October 1st, and all applications would be closed on October 1st as well by 5:00 P.M. For banner specifications, the standard size will be 17 by 36. The material is a double-sided weather-resistant vinyl, and the design elements would include the veteran's name, military branch, photo, rank, years of service, awards, and designs would be created by the Communications Director to meet the city branding. I do have an example of what we do currently have. I have two copies that I can pass out to you guys now.
Yeah, we can slide them down.
To confirm the eligibility, the veteran status, they must have served in any branch of the United States Armed Forces, active duty, reserves, or National Guard. The residency veteran must be a current or former Winter Springs resident, or the applicant must be an immediate family member of such veteran. Verification documentation confirming military service is required as well as a proof of residency. Usually for a proof of residency, we require an updated driver's license as well as a utility bill. Any renewals, banners may be renewed annually for an additional $100 if it is still in displayable condition. This will be determined by our Parks Manager at the time of around October 1st, and we will notify the family if any banners need to be remade or updated for them. The city will inspect stored banners prior to reinstallation, and any damaged banners or worn banners may be required at the applicant's expense of $100. The program promotion, the city's Communication Director will oversee outreach and promotion through city website, all social media channels, community newsletters, emails, as well as local press releases. And that is all I have for you today. If you have any questions.
Do you have any more copies of this?
First of all, I just want to say thank you to both you and to the city staff for doing this, and thank you for taking on, you're like, you know, you're like, they're going to contact me, they're going to come in and see me. So I know that's a lot of time that you're going to be spending with this. I really appreciate it. I know there's others in the community that really appreciate, I just want to front load that and let you know that we appreciate you including that in your job description, because I know that's an additional that that was not there when you agreed to do the position. So thank you for that. So we'll start at the end. Paul, do you have anything down there?
I do, so I saw you have awards on there.
Mm-hmm.
Most people, a lot of people I know have a bunch of awards. So are you going to put a limit on there or something?
We would most likely have to put a limit on it. I would probably recommend maybe three. I'm not exactly sure what the.
I'm actually going to make a recommendation that we take rank, years of service, awards, and commendations.
Yeah, I was thinking, just military service is what I would say.
Military service?
Right, their branch, photo, and their name.
Yep.
I think that's all the, I mean, that's my opinion.
Otherwise, it'll be a competition.
Right, and then, oh, this isn't right, or I got this added and that sort of thing.
And some people don't want everything listed.
The first, did you guys not get the the page? I guess it was in the one that was emailed out. So the design elements would be the veteran's name, military branch, and photo.
I concur.
Okay, so that's the second. Any any other comments on that? I want to hear, I especially want to hear from the end because you're you're a non milit, I mean, you're a veteran spouse, so we want to hear your opinion.
No, I'm a veteran's mom.
Veteran's mom, okay.
And the daughter-in-law, the veteran.
Right.
And actually, orfs go back to the, to the Revolutionary War.
Right.
There's been an orf.
But you don't, you don't think it would be disrespectful to, as a family member, to leave that that information off, do you?
No, I don't. I think it might be too hard because, as you said, they could have a lot of awards. I mean, I know many that have had chestfuls.
Right.
So which one do you pick?
Yeah, Kim, you had your hand up. Did you have something you wanted to add?
I would assume the proof of military service is a DD Form 214, and the picture would be a military picture.
So there's two things on it. First of all, on the DD 214, we didn't discuss other than honorable discharge. Are we going to allow everybody? Is there going to be a limit there? How do we want to handle that?
Honorable discharge.
Well, pure, pure opinion, I'd say only honorable discharge.
Well, there's, I know several people that are other than honorable.
I'm tracking.
Yeah, but I think dishonorable would be an automatic no-go.
I agree, I agree with that.
May I say something on that?
Yes.
Because I have a nephew who has other than honorable because he did not take.
The jab.
The shot.
Good point.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So.
Pride, distance, pride, distance.
So I would say dishonorable would be a definite, thank you.
So they changed the law on that. He can go get that DD 214 changed now.
He can now.
If they can find his paperwork. Last time he tried, they could not find him in the system.
We know that right there.
DD 214 should have the code at the bottom on.
So we, are we all good on the dishonorable is a no?
Yes.
Others, okay. So that's something that in your process.
Anything above dishonorable.
Right, okay, and then the pictures. The question I had is on yours, it says high qual, high resolution photo. Well, some photos may not be, I know that's a city code, city requirement, but when I first presented it to the commissioners, I said, you know, some of these people may have like 1940s photos.
Yeah.
Are you okay, are you willing to work with non high, case-by-case basis?
For the record, Communications Director, Matt Reeser, yes.
Okay.
We said high res. What we really don't want is, we don't want a photo that is so blurred, tattered, and you're, you know, and bent and folded. Sometimes these things pass through a lot of hands.
Right.
And they just, it's hard to, it's hard to restore those photos digitally. It's a lot of work. So if there is a high-quality photo, and we would prefer service photos, if we can get them, as you see, we we silhouetted the the image, but you kind of get the idea where we could Photoshop out the background and just have the individual in their uniform. So that would be the idea. The the better quality, we would really prefer. We put that in there because we don't want to just say any photo, and then we get something that doesn't quite match the standards. Obviously, if you're going to put in the effort and frankly, the money to do this, we want it to look as good as possible, because these are going to be up for a long period of time. Also, when you blow things up to a certain size, pixelization and just overall quality of the photo starts to deteriorate. So the better quality we can get and moving forward, then that allows us to to fit that format and make them look as good as they want, because obviously, these are, these are individuals that family, friends want to honor.
Right.
And I think that that was the the thought behind the high-quality photos.
Absolutely, absolutely. So my question is, a high-resolution photo of the veteran, is that on the application process, or that's a requirement, or is that one of those that says is desired, like, so it's not going to, oh, I don't have one of those, I can't even apply, you know what I mean?
So that would be something that I would be able to communicate with them after the application process is done. We are unable to upload files to that specific application process, so it would be kind of done once the payment is submitted, kind of before that October 1st deadline.
Okay.
So it could be discussed on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Okay, I have a few questions. Well, one's a statement before a question. Can we all get a copy of your presentation in a PDF form or something along that line?
It's, you got it in your email.
Of that of that whole presentation?
Yeah.
I never got the email, so.
You have to print a lot of stuff out if you have a, no, I never got it. My printer's in cartridge.
And this, I don't know, this might be a question for you or maybe him. What's the life expectancy of those banners in our in our fine sunshine?
Well, it it, that depends. Depends on the vendor that we go with. We have a couple of vendors that we traditionally use for our banners, and then depending on how long they stay up, normally our our event banners don't stay up as long as these would probably stay up.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, these would be.
We're talking six months here.
Yeah, these would have to be fairly, we do have banners that have been up for that length of time and longer. You'll see them around town with the parks. Those are pretty heavy-duty. Those do cost a bit more, which is why you're looking at the the prices you are, because we want these to to last for a long time. We'd like to print them and keep them as long as we can, maybe run through a few cycles before we have to to rotate them out.
At $200 apiece, it would be nice if it could last.
And and part of that, too, is when you look at the cost of them, what what's really different than what we would normally do is when we print our holiday banners or our event banners, we're printing a run of 50 to 60 of those. So the more you have, the cost goes down. These are highly individualized, which it's a one-and-done.
I think removing the awards will help, too. It'll be just, so that might.
And to that point, too, this design was based on request, that we kind of tried to accommodate everybody, but in hearing some of the suggestions, it's not a heavy lift for me to go back and redesign these to remove those things. And in actuality, I'm kind of glad, because it it takes away a design element. It also could, you know, it makes things look a little cleaner. But this was just, this initial draft of it was just to give you an idea of the, what you would see based on the requests that we had from several individuals. So those elements can be removed or added however we see fit.
I have a question. Where are, where are the banners going to be displayed?
So currently, they would be displayed on a portion of Tuscaloosa and Blumberg, which is closer near the area of the Winter Springs Town Center, as well as located around the Winter Springs Veterans Memorial Area.
Cool. And do we have a a total amount?
22.
22 poles, 44 banners.
Correct.
That's on Blumberg. North Tuscaloosa has 14 poles or 28 banners. If we get that many.
Correct.
So.
So we have, what's, so what would be the total that we can get?
72.
And this registration system is set up to, once we hit 72, it will automatically not be available online. So if someone was to go and their number 73, they will see that the program is technically sold out.
Other questions? One of the things that's in here, you, I don't know if you touched on it or not, but it says residency veteran must be a current or former Winter Springs resident, or the applicant must be an immediate family member of such a veteran. So let me use an example. I have friends of my fam, I'm a Winter Springs resident. I have friends of my family that are not, at one time, they were Winter Springs resident. Would I be allowed to put a banner up for them? Sounds like yes, but I just want to make sure, because it says must be a current or former Winter Springs resident. Well, they're not going to be putting up for themselves because they're no longer with us.
I would have to speak with Director Donegan on that one. That was one of the things, we wanted to limit it to Winter Springs residents. I don't mean to be morbid, but if if a person has passed, they no longer reside in the city of Winter Springs. I think that's kind of how it was.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of how they meant was somebody, they were at least at one time living in Winter Springs and maybe are no longer with us or whatever. I think we were trying to cover all our bases.
So this is not a, not a fam, not an immediate family member, but someone that did live in Winter Springs?
That could be, yeah, I mean, if you were.
So it would be entered, and then you could look at it and say, nope, sorry, or whatever. Okay.
I got a question on it.
Yeah.
I got a hometown hero. I have no way of getting any information on him. He's passed. Would that be?
If you wanted to do that.
Yeah, I mean, but I can't get, you know, proof of military, proof of residency, because he's already passed. But the hometown hero should be enough. I, that's what I'm saying.
You guys would have vetted that.
Yeah, I think we're doing kind of a case-by-case basis. So for a hometown hero, requirements are required for that program. So we would play it by a case-by-case basis, but we are trying to be more on the strict side when it comes to the documentation required, because we want to be sure that everyone represented has had that service to be up there. So that would be a case-by-case basis.
And I think this first year, it's going to be a lot of learning points, you know, oh, let's do this, and it will get easier, I think, over time, so.
Correct, and I think that's why we wanted to lay out exactly the roles and responsibilities for each section of the program. So if anyone had any questions or concerns about that, they would be able to contact me directly, and then we would be able to work it out with them, with that family member or friend.
So if you had a question in your research, would you contact us, one of us? How would you, no?
If decided, I know we discussed potentially doing liaisons for different portions of city events or programs. If we wanted to, we could do a liaison potentially for this program as well, which we could include in any communications we have, but I would also most likely include our Director, Brian Donegan, on the conversation as well. So it would most likely be myself, him as well, and then potentially a liaison from this board.
Okay, so on that note, is there someone here that would like to serve as a liaison to this program for Hannah, like if she has a question that she can call one of us?
Sure, I will.
So you have at the end, Paul Dillman.
Paul Dillman.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. This first year, it'll be.
Can I cut back to something we already talked about for a minute? Hey, I'm having a problem with this discharge thing.
Okay.
Okay, I do, I have a problem with the discharge thing, because I retired out of the disciplinary barracks in Fort Leavenworth, Kansas, and I've seen every discharge you can get.
Okay.
And the order of discharge goes honorable, general, other than honorable, which is a discharge signifying departure from expected conduct or performance due to serious or repeated misconduct.
Okay.
So I have a problem with that. I would, I I think honorable or. So I have a problem with that. I would, I, I think a, a honorable or general discharge.
Okay.
But other than honorable, I have a problem with it.
Okay.
And I can be an out voter. If everybody else votes on it, yes, I can be an out voter. It doesn't mi, matter to me.
Uh, when I made that statement, I didn't realize you had the third one in there. I thought, I thought it was hon, honorable, other than honorable and double. No, I agree with you.
Honorable, general, other than honorable, bad conduct, dishonorable.
I agree with honorable and general.
And I also know that people that were thrown out of the military for drugs was mainly other than honorable.
Yeah.
You had something you wanted to add?
I think personally, in order to avoid opening Pandora's box, if we can't come up with enough people with an honorable discharge, then we're in trouble.
I'd like to include general.
I think there'll be a, a lot of feedback from the city about why you've allowed it to go beyond honorable.
I think general and honorable are great.
I think the names as other than honorable, we didn't want.
Yeah.
I, the thing that I don't want to see is, is you got a guy with an under the honorable applying, and then another guy with honorable, but we run out of room and the other than honorable's up there and the honorable guy isn't.
So it's honorable and general.
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay, so.
I second it.
Honorable and general?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, honorable and general. That's it.
Any, I know you want dishonorable.
Can some, no, no, I'd like, no, I want to leave it at honorable. I, I'm curious, what is a general discharge? What is a, what are the circumstances for a general?
Under a general discharge, while it's still condis, considered a good paper discharge, this level indicates that the servicemen, members' conduct was generally satisfactory, but they may have fallen short during the status, during the standards for an honorable discharge due to minor misconduct or performance issue.
Or you did not get selected for promotion. If you do not get selected for promotion, it's a general.
That's true.
That's true.
So if you're not selected for promotion, you're a general discharge.
Oh, I wasn't, so that's, so a lot of people don't get promoted and they get a general instead of honorable?
That is correct.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't believe it.
Yes.
True story. If you get passed over three times, you're done and you get a general discharge.
My son. So, did we sway you?
He did, yeah. I don't believe that. That's the most screwed up DOD decision I've ever heard of.
Motion on the floor. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to verify the motioner. Was Mr. Douglas correct? And the second?
Paul Dilman.
Mr. Dilman, okay. Okay. Sorry. I just want to make sure I had the correct.
Discussion. Okay, are we ready to vote? All in favor of the top two, honorable and general?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there's where we're going with it. Um, the last thing I had was, and I talked to you beforehand, I just want to make sure the whole committee hears, is um, the two that are, the two vendors that are currently authorized by Winter Springs are not in Winter Springs. I am going to um, recommend, encourage the city to reach out to, uh, I know of one that has been great for us in the past, Quick, Quixar. I don't know if you guys use them or not. They're in Winter Springs across from the police department. Um, and if you need me to contact them to encourage them, whatever paperwork needs to be done to be considered uh, a acceptable vendor for the city, just because like if grandma has a picture and doesn't want to give it to Hannah, she can go there and they will scan it and ha, they, they will provide, it's, it's close. It's in our city. We're, we're supporting our city uh, businesses. So that's, I'm just encouraging the city to do that, please.
I've just been informed that they are a vendor. We have used them in the past. I just have not.
Okay.
So I apologize for that mistake. That's on me.
Hey, we, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have another point of clarification. I don't want to beat this to death, but I'm going to. Um, is this honorable discharge that you're referring to, is that for a particular service?
All services. All military service.
I would like to ask the, that we keep that in, in the, in our, in the official record. So if anybody ever calls, I mean, it's in there that if you're passed over three times for, in any rank for promotion, you're automatically discharged with a general discharge. Cause I've, I've never heard this, I've, you know, I've been around a, a long time and I'm amazed that that never got passed.
Well, that's a Department of Defense thing though. That's not a city of Winter Springs.
Yeah, but there's different reasons for that too. If you were overweight and couldn't lose the weight.
You throw them out.
Well, that's part of the general discharge. That's part of the general.
Okay. Well, you're, all right. So those of you familiar, I think the general public is, everyone knows about an honorable discharge. Everything else they say.
What is that?
Why didn't you get an honorable discharge? Or why didn't they? And so that's, okay, so as long as you're clear on a general discharge.
I've thrown plenty of people out of the army for.
What's the city doing?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, those that didn't get the jab, now did they get a general discharge?
I believe they got an other than honorable, but they can go back.
And get it changed.
And get it changed now.
Okay.
So if you know anybody, encourage, I mean, well, I'm saying, in your role where you are, if you hear of someone that has it, encourage them to get their records changed.
Concur.
Okay. All right, were there any other questions relating to the hometown hero?
The banner.
The banners.
Do you have any more copies of these?
I can send you all a digital copy of that with the modifications that you requested.
This was not, this was not, the, the, this part.
The photo was.
The photo.
No.
No.
Can I take this one?
You can, you can have that.
All right.
But I will, I will email you a digital copy with those adjustments and it will, it will gra, reflect what we already have.
I just think it will show more if we have less, if that makes sense.
That's, I'm, I'm all for it. I really like clean and.
It's easier to reproduce than to.
But this was, this design here was born out of a number of suggestions and when you have a number of people making suggestions, you try to.
Right, accommodate.
Try to accommodate everybody and, and obviously, as we've discussed it, it, it kind of has simplified, which is where I wanted to go in the first place. So thank you very much for that. It makes my life easier.
Yes. So a question for you, Hannah, is when will this be presented to the commissioners?
I believe once we get your go-ahead with the requested changes, we will put it in probably the August meetings. Yep.
Can, can someone be notified that it is, or do we have to just keep checking to see? We have to check to see?
Me? No, we can, I mean, if you'd like, yeah, I'll, you know.
One or more of us would like to be there in case there's questions, I believe.
Yeah. Um, so the next August me, the next meeting would be August eleventh would be for commission. So as long as everything is good with you guys, um, and Hannah doesn't have any changes, it would probably go with that meeting.
Any, any other comments?
Just, just, um, since I didn't seem to get it through my e, through my email, could you resend that email to me so I could get all that information?
Yeah, I'll resend you the agenda and make sure you get it. If you don't get it to me by tomorrow, from, an email from me by tomorrow, give us a call, let us know. So, cause it might be something either with the email address that we have for you or something. Um, but yeah, I'll resend it out to you so you have the full agenda again and things like that. It's also available on our website. If you ever have any issues with the agenda, they're always posted on our website.
Okay. And you had a question. If it goes in front of the commission in August, when do you think they'll start actually implementing it?
If it's approved.
If it's approved.
If it's approved, we usually are able to start registration or the next steps the next day. Um, so we can kind of keep you updated as needed. Uh, the city commission has already kind of given us the go-ahead to move forward with this, so I don't necessarily see any implications with them not approving this. Um, so we would be able to get something probably that week at least.
So come January, providing everything goes right, we should be hanging banners?
That is correct. If all goes to plan, yes.
And is that one of those that you would do like a standalone versus in the newsletter, a standalone media?
With something like this, with this program, um, my plans were, as far as communication wise, would not only be press release, but also utilizing all of our social channels. The newsletter would be a part of that. Um, we, we've been, I don't know if you've seen, we have added a section to our newsletter for the veterans and veterans advisory families. Um, so we have a segment in there that I would like to put that in as well. Um, and it will run periodically as far as scheduling goes, but also on the website itself, it will have its own standalone page where it will link to um, the registration page. Um, my hope is that we can draw some attention to it. Um, I do have a very good relationship with a number of individuals who cover Winter Springs quite extensively. So my hope is to get them involved as well and maybe get, get this out there to everybody. I'm just going to hit as many channels as I can. Um, and that's kind of the way I like to do things.
Okay. And then thinking positively, it goes forward and January, they're starting to be put up. Is there, like, could we, someone be notified? So we could like be there as they're being put up and we could make an event out of it, you know, make, do some social posts. Look at our new program, you know?
That would be part of this, that would be part of the promotion of the program, obviously. Telling people that it's starting, how to register, and then moving forward, um, when they do start to go up around town, being part of that.
Right.
And then just becoming part of our overall social schedule. Um, there's a number of things that we promote quite often.
Mm-hmm.
Um, every so often, we'll bring programs back just because they kind of moved down people's
Right.
radar a little bit. Um, but that would be something that we would want to do, especially for something like this, I mean,
The first time.
To telling people that it's, it's going up and then to not have them being put up is
Right.
is kind of not something I really want to do.
Well, again, we, we really appreciate the time and effort you guys have both put into it, the rest of the city staff. So thank you for accepting.
So if it's approved August eighth?
Eleventh.
Eleventh, excuse me.
October. No, August.
August.
Oh, okay.
So the next day, we would be notified if we're not here?
I'll let you know, because I'm going to be at the meeting.
No, the reason I'm going to say, because the moment they say yes, we can start advertising.
We can.
We're all part of veterans groups.
Right.
So we can get a lot of word out.
Yes, so this program, all those screenshots that I had, it's all set up, ready to go. We would just have to make it visible online for people to see it once we get the go-ahead. So really, it's just a click of a button.
I would wait to see it from them because otherwise they'll be like, where is it? Where is it? Where can I see it? Wait until they activate it.
That was going to be my next question. When people go online to look, it's going to explain to them how to go about doing it.
Right. I would say, I would say that you would probably want to wait until we have the website ready to go. We have, we have a number of people who hear something and then they go, great guns. And the next thing you know, you're, they're like, it doesn't work and it just causes a lot of.
And if you want any.
Revamp their whole website.
If you want any test cases, I know there's several people here that probably already have someone in mind that they would like to do it. If you want to do any kind of beta testing with it beforehand.
And, and.
I have one more question about the fee. Okay, the person's applied and everything else, and then you reject them. Will that fee be reimbursed to them?
Yes, and that would be a case by case basis. So I would review their application. Um, I get notified within the first few minutes of an application being processed. And if we are able to get that approval process done that day, we are able to provide a refund if declined that day.
That's fantastic. I didn't think you were going to get it back.
And then if more than one person submits, the same person, whoever submits it first, the second and third people, you would probably contact them and say, hey, this person has already been selected for a banner?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Anything else? Good. You guys need to pat yourselves on the back and thank the, thank the city for this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
Anything else for five hundred you need? Um, next is the twenty twenty-five hometown hero. Since some of you are not getting emails, we have three, three that were submitted. Um, since you didn't get them, the first one was Matthew Gallant. He's in Winter Springs. His information is a veteran who's committed to support his community, HOA board member for, for over four years, doing a great job keeping costs down, always supporting our police officers and firefighters. Submitted by not a family member, but a, a friend, an acquaintance. So that's number one, Cruz. Number two is, um, I can't find it. Oh, Gallo, Art Gallo. Um, he was a Navy pilot from nineteen seventy-three to two thousand and four. He spent his time in the US Navy flying helicopters and served as the air boss for deployment aboard the USS Tripoli. He's in Winter Springs and it was submitted by a commissioner. So that's two.
Does it say what he does now? What he, anything to support Winter Springs?
No.
Okay.
The third one, uh, it's, it's longer. I don't mind reading it if you want me to read it all. Um, you have a copy, so you don't, you, okay. Uh, the nominee information is Sean Richards. Sean is a highly decorated and combat wounded military veteran who dedicated twenty years of service to the United States Army and ultimately served with the most elite special operations unit in the Department of Defense Delta Force. While assigned to Delta Force, Sean deployed multiple times to various combat zones and participated in the most complex, covert, and dangerous national level missions direct by the President of the United States and Secretary of Defense. Has more on his deployments and information. I'm going to go to following his military retirement. In twenty twenty-one, Sean and his wife Sarah, along with their daughter Ashlyn, moved from Fort Bragg, North Carolina, to Winter Springs, Florida. Upon settling in Winter Springs, Sean demonstrated the same characteristics in his post-military life that made him one of the most elite members of the US military as he embarked on a challenging entrepreneurial endeavor, building and growing a successful company that remains tied to the local community. He successfully launched his own home inspection business, uh, tier one pro inspections within Winter Springs and consistently and tirelessly donates time, services, and funds to multiple charitable organizations that are near and dear to his heart. These organizations include, but are not limited to Dave's House, which provides permanent supportive housing that integrates affordable homes with essential mental health services, which empowers residents to thrive with dignity and purpose. Seminole Kids House, Annabelle's Closet. Um, and then additionally, Sean and his wife regularly host several networking events with Seminole and Orange County that seek to strengthen relationships in the real estate, home improvement industries. There's a little bit more information if you want me to read it fully, but I would like to um, just kind of do a, a vote to see where we are. Those that are for number one, those that are for number two, those that are for number three. All right, it's unanimous. Keith Badchild, uh, not Keith Badchild, it's Sean Richards. We would like to present to the commissioners to be this year's hometown hero.
So I was close. Those two guys are both awesome. It's just the other guy had a little more stuff on it.
It's, and sometimes it's, 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 it's up to whoever writes the, you know, same way.
One hundred percent concur.
Information, yep.
So, do you have any questions for us on that? Okay. Liaison selection for Veterans Day. Okay, so a liaison, this is kind of new for us. We asked for this. We wanted someone to be from, from the seven of us to be looped in on what we're doing for Veterans Day. Um, Hannah does a great job organizing it. Um, it's just not, and, and we're not going to tell you how to do things. It's just one of those, hey, this is how we're doing it. And it might be like, hmm, you know, in the military, this is kind, this might be more appropriate. So that was, that's kind of the role that I would think the liaison would do. Is there anyone that is, um, that has a passion that wants to be the liaison for this year's Veterans Day? And they would be included in, in the necessary emails and a, a planning session. Not all of them, but the ones that maybe you're talking about procedure or, or protocol, things like that. Scott Sims is going to be our, this year's liaison for the Veterans Day.
So.
Yes.
Can I ask a question? When does planning for this start?
May.
May.
Maybe even earlier, right?
Hello, Hannah Kirsch, Recreation and Event Manager. Uh, we do plan this quite early. Uh, myself and the Communications Director, Matt, have already been working on updating a few things from the previous event. Um, we are working on a few of the, um, the roll call names with all of the names on the Veterans Memorial. We're looking to update that. We are also looking to update the kind of highlight reel of all the different branches to ensure that all of the, um.
All of the services, right?
All of the services are highlighted as well as, I am blanking on the name of it, but the music with it is all accurate and up to date.
There you go.
And that's in the right order, right? That kind of stuff?
Yes, so we're working on that to make sure that we have own copies of it. So from year to year, we can just keep updating it in-house and making sure it's good to go. We do work with the Rotary Club of Winter Springs on this event as well. So we usually have our first meeting with them probably at the middle of August. Um, so we usually meet with a few representatives from them and which we can also include Scott in there as well.
If you're not able to go to one of them, please let me know and I'll make sure that myself or someone else will go.
What day is Veterans Day this year?
It's always on the eleventh, November eleventh.
Okay. Ceremonies are always eleven, eleven.
Eleven, eleven.
Yeah.
I was going to be out of town there for a little bit.
Yes, this year it falls on a Thursday.
Rain or shine, rain is inside, shine is outside.
Yes. Tuesday.
I thought it was Tuesday.
You can say it's Tuesday.
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 The other T.
You do know, Scott, that the Marine Corps are.
Birthday is the same freaking day, isn't it?
Is on the eleventh.
Yeah, it's the same day.
Why don't we see if there's maybe someone else?
Two hundred and fiftieth birthday of the Marine Corps.
That's November tenth.
Yes, but you'll be recovering from that. Okay, we're going to change Scott out, just for his own good.
We're going to be celebrating.
Um, you can go ahead and put me, if no one else.
That might be safe for this year.
Yes. Okay. Um, so Veterans Day, any other questions on Veterans Day? Have you, has, has everyone here been to a Veterans Day hometown hero, Winter Springs event?
Yep.
So they kind of know what goes on?
Yep.
All right. All right. So if, um, yeah, of course you did, right? Um, if there's anything, like going back and you say, I wish this was different or whatever, um, just fun, I don't know, I can't do that. You have to go directly to her because I can't sunshine it. So if you have anything, hey, last year this happened, or I've seen this happen, it has to go to Hannah. I can't, I can't. I can't talk to them, right? Okay, or Tristan. So Hannah or Tristan, okay? Alright, anything else on Veterans Day? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Winter Springs Veterans Memorial update.
Hello, Hannah Kirsch, Recreation and Event Manager for the city. So I wanted to just to provide a quick update for. The names on the Veterans Memorial. So we currently have two names that are on the waitlist to be included on the memorial. Those would be added on to the memorial after October first, just in time for the veterans event. On Veterans Day, November eleventh. So we did update that registration program as well. It was a little bit kind of a gray area as far as what the registration process was for it. So we did update it to be the exact same as the veterans banner program, so it is listed on the same website. Follows the same process as well. Um, so if they have any questions, they would just go directly to me. And then the registration would be very similar to the previous registration process I just showed you.
Same dates, October first.
October first.
Excellent. Makes it easy.
So. Question. These are the same, there's all those plaques around the the memorial. Hundreds and hundreds, these are two that are gonna be added to that list of those plaques.
Yes, that's correct.
Plus any you receive before October first.
Yes.
So it's a memorial, but you don't have to be dead to be up there.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
What's the cost for that?
The cost, I believe, I have to double check on it.
Unless they change it.
It is a hundred and I do also want to make a note that if you do a credit card, there is gonna be a processing fee for both this. As well as the banner program as well.
Alright, I got one question I want to go back to. Must be a veteran for this, right? Not an organization.
Correct, yes.
Okay, not like the wall.
Oh, the wall, you can be an organization to be on the Veterans Memorial.
Tuscaloosa Homeowners Association's down there a couple times.
Okay. One more, any other questions on the memorial? No? Nothing, okay. Thank you, Hannah.
You're welcome.
Are you the newsletter person too?
No, that is.
Because we have to discuss here.
Recreation and Event.
So we have August, September and October. Any ideas for what we would like to see in, they're graciously giving us space. In their newsletter. Does anyone come with any recommendations for what they would like to see put in a newsletter?
Well, I have a recommendation for an event. I've mentioned, I think I mentioned it before, but it could be around Veterans Day whenever, I'd like to see Winter Springs put on a veteran social. Out in the park somewhere, we get all the veteran organizations.
So that's not news, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna call you there because that's not a newsletter item. So that's no, that's, so any, anyone want to maybe come up and brainstorm something for August, September, October? I think the the banner program, not the banner program, but the Veterans Memorial program, probably could go with that for August. Maybe an update on that, say if you're interested, because that gives them enough time, that's already been approved, there's nothing we have to wait for. September could be the banner program. I mean, I know you're doing it separate, but we encourage them because we want them to be engaged there. October would maybe be, um.
Memorial Day or Veterans Day.
Um, but they're already gonna be doing that because it's a city function.
For the record, Matt Reiser, Communications Director, yes. So with the newsletter, um, what I, what we had envisioned from y'all was. We would like something, at least in everyone, it doesn't have to be, we don't, we don't have to have something for everyone, so don't feel any pressure that you have to. But there is a section that I've started to block out for, for you all to promote something. We would preferably like to have something that's tied into Winter Springs specifically. That's not, if that's not possible, just try to be as Winter Springs centric as we can. Obviously, we have the VFW here. They have events, so sometimes we could try to do that. The, 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 the reason being is. You start to go down a road of including stuff in the newsletter that one organization will get upset because. We're giving people, oh, well, you let them do this, how come you won't let us? Well, so the more we can keep things to Winter Springs centric. Or to Winter Springs veterans. Specifically, we would prefer. Um, as for August, um, you know, that's, those ideas are great. Uh, we'll, we will already be promoting for, um, October. We'll be looking ahead to hometown hero. That usually gets included, um, because we usually have that decision by then and that that goes out, so not for October, I mean for November. So the November first is when those newsletters go out, is the first of the month. So on November first, that would include our hometown hero. It would also promote the, um, the veterans event itself. So that would kind of be taken care of. Also, in October would be a look ahead to that event as well, so you have two opportunities there.
But you're already including that as a city because it's a sitting event.
Correct.
Maybe like October, um, have a write-up about, uh, this, the Seminole County Veteran Service Officer. Um, do you need to see a veterans, a Seminole County Veteran Service Officer? Did you know they come to the city of Winter Springs?
Correct.
And put that information in there so that anyone that doesn't already know, they come here instead of you having to drive there.
Those, those kind of items would be, be helpful.
They come to the VFW.
Yeah, can you, can you write an article for October?
Get something and I'll submit. And we also have a new service officer.
Again, things tied to you all, your, your board itself, um, would be preferable. Is the, the more we can stick to that, the better.
Well, and the service officer sees, so what it is, let's say, um, not to be morbid, but let's say a service member passes and their spouse is still in the area. They don't know where to go. If they haven't done that, you know, their, their, their service member didn't leave them instructions, what do I do? How do I get the flag and that sort of thing? They don't know where to start. Some of them don't know where to start, I'll say that. A veteran service officer is who they would go see. So it's a service officer helps not only service members or or veterans, it helps the families as well. And people in Winter Springs may not know, um, I, I come into contact almost every day with people that don't realize that. Oh, Seminole County has a veteran service officer? Well, yes, they do, and they, they try to do outreach into our area.
And what we would do is we would, we would promote that and then tie it back to. You all and how you, you are, you are a board that advises the city on veterans and veterans of. You know, events and and things that affect them. So that's, that's kind of how we would do it. It would, it would be more of presenting it in that way. If you, if you all have a number of them and you want to build them out for the, for the coming months, that's great. You can email Tristan or Christian those suggestions, um, with some information and we can definitely start working that in. Into that.
So. It's kind of, well, I don't know if I can do this or not, but I'm gonna ask a question anyway. So the VFW itself does a Gold Star Lunch every year in September. And a lot of families don't know that they do that.
I don't know that. I live in Winter Springs. I'm a veteran. I don't know they do that.
So it's, it's a district run function and it wouldn't be in Winter Springs, but it's, it's for people, everybody that lives within the community.
There would be.
I can give you a small write-up on that.
We, there'd be a way we could. It's how you, it's how we phrase it and how we work it in. It would be very, it would have to be.
Can you get that to him by, is it the fifteenth? It's two weeks before the end of the month, right? Is when you want that?
Um, I usually, yeah, I usually ask for two weeks, um, give or take, because there's a lot of last minute stuff that sometimes happens.
Right. And layouts. That would be our August one for September.
Yep.
Okay, and then if someone is submitting that, would you, like, after you write it and massage it and say what you want to say, would you send it back to him and say? Like how you did with me, is this right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I could do that as a courtesy. Um, usually once those are all written up and and placed in there, it kind of, it gives you an idea of what's what.
Okay, so you have Au- August, September, we're gonna do the banner program. October, do we want to talk about the service officer? I could write that up. I'll just get the information from you, or if you want to write it, no?
I'll get both.
Okay, thanks.
I would like also included, um, for veterans that commit suicide, let people know that there's that phone number for them.
Okay.
And, you know, that they need help if they want somebody to reach out to before they kill themselves.
Isn't October Suicide Prevention Month?
Yeah.
I believe it is.
So.
Okay.
That's why I was bringing it up.
Would you maybe want to write something?
Um, sure.
You walked right into that one.
Oops, well, I mean. Can she send me, this is what I'd like to submit for an article, or is that no? Hang on, let her answer that.
I don't think so.
Because I want to offer her assistance if she wants it rather than leaving her out there on her own, but if I can't do that, I.
Let's, let's take that a step farther. How much space do we have in that letter?
There's really, it's not a lot. You're looking at a couple of paragraphs, so we need to be very selective in how we do that and. And prioritize what we want to promote because there are a number of other city initiatives. I mean, we have not only the city, but we also include senior center, uh, police departments.
Something like Suicide Awareness, that to me seems like it should be in every letter.
I, that's what I just said. I, I agree.
And with, with those kind of things too, we need to be thinking, again, more, more Winter Springs centric. Ideas that would tie back to the veterans.
Like if there was a walk in Winter Springs to help raise awareness.
Those kind of things, you know, it would, what I'm, in a roundabout way, what I'm trying to say is we need to be creative. In how we write this and how we present it, because again, we don't want to open the door to just anyone. This is, this is, this is a Winter Springs board and this is a committee that we're, we're working with and we want to provide you guys that space. But at the same time, we don't want to take away from, you know, take away from your spot because somebody else wants. Oh, well, you did it for them. We want that too.
Right.
So we need to be very careful about what we're, what we're promoting and how we do it. Not to say no, because I won't. Um, but what, what I say is we need to be mindful of, there's not a lot of space. And then also what we're, what we're doing also needs to be a little evergreen. This is gonna be out there for a month. I, I, I notice, I get, um, information on when people actually read it, um, when it sends out the newsletter email. And sometimes people don't open them for weeks. So you have, if you have something that's happening at the beginning of the month.
It's too late.
It, and then they go and they read it later, they're like, well, that's too late. So you have to make sure that you're trying to find evergreen material as well. Um, the Honor Flight being one of them, that was something that could go at any time. It's not just that specific month. So be thinking along those lines too, is evergreen material also will play very well and a lot of the times. That is something that we can utilize across a lot of platforms as, as well. It, it plays across social media, newsletter, but also the website. So those are the kind of considerations that we need to have when we submit those.
So let's just, for the sake of succinctness, um, August, Paul, you're gonna work on a Gold Star one.
Yes, ma'am.
To send. Um, September's gonna be, we're gonna highlight the new banner program. We're gonna be optimistic and say that it's gonna pass. Um, and then October, um, instead of doing the suicide prevention, I know that that needs to be broader than that. But instead of it being tied to this committee, let's do the, um, service officer.
So.
Because that's, hey, this is a service to you in Winter Springs. We want to make sure our Winter Springs residents know that it's available.
For when?
October.
Okay, okay, that's good because the Seminole County Service Officer resigned recently and they haven't put a new one in his place, yes. They haven't put a new one in his place, so we have an established date where they, where he comes to the post.
We got an intern, but.
But does Kathy come?
Yes.
Kathy comes to our post. Does Kathy go to you guys?
Well, Kathy, I don't know.
Kathy Schubert, she's a, she's a veteran service off, she's an assistant veteran service officer.
I, I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, she don't come to us.
Yeah, I think only KJ did and then who's the other guy?
There's Josh.
Josh, yeah.
He, he's.
By October, you should know.
He's trying to get.
Established.
Up there in the plate, yeah.
So we have three. Next time we meet, we need to think of November, December, January, okay? For what we would like to have for our veterans section. Again, taking the comments to heart that it may be from us, not, not necessarily overarching into. Much broader areas. Does that sound right?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's, that's the preference. Um, again, this is, this is coming from you all. And we want to make sure that it, it's actually tied into you and and your committee. And not so broad reaching that it doesn't, it doesn't apply to our residents.
I think it's important for all of us to realize what our, our role is here as opposed to the city's role. Because the city is, is supporting this board right now. Uh, and it's city taxes that pays for this meeting to take place. And what we ask the city to do in return, um, is what they would normally do for any other organization and not much more than that. So if we ask them to announce that there's, you know, we have a suicide, just call this number and it's in the city's newsletter. Then about eight or ten other organizations are gonna come out and say, well, if you're doing that for the veterans, you do it for us too. And then so all of a sudden, the door comes down and we have to be incredibly careful. And so the veterans officer coming here, I think they may be able to put something in there where the veterans can, the veteran service officer. Might, you know, attends to issues regarding suicide prevention. And it becomes part of a, of that thing that we're supporting, but the city is not doing it. Uh, in a manner that would put them at risk for somebody else saying, when you did it for them, do it for me.
Correct.
So that's, we have to be very careful. But we don't step on their toes, so to speak.
We try, we try not to. Alright, anything else newsletter?
I don't know.
Nothing, nothing else newsletter. Okay, the two that I add, Festival of the Arts, thank you. Festival of the Arts. So when I looked up Festival of the Arts on the Winter Springs website, it said Sunday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, ten AM to five PM. Do we still do that? The reason I'm asking is because I would like to maybe open discussion to have, add a veterans award. Like veteran section of the award process. Sorry, Hannah, go ahead.
No, you're good. Hannah Kirsch, Recreation and Event Manager. So the Oviedo Winter Springs Chamber of Commerce was over the. Winter Springs Festival of the Arts. They no longer do that event anymore. So they haven't done that event for about three years now. Uh, they now do the Central Winds Music Festival event. They have done that for two years now and they are under new management. They have a brand new team, new director. Um, new events manager as well as a new marketing manager. Um, so right now they're in the finalizing details. Of what they're going to be doing for this year. Um, all that we know right now is it's going to be on November fifteenth. And times are to be determined. And I do have some contact information for you. Um, so if you would like information to get involved with that event, you can reach out to their president.
It's a music festival?
Yeah.
Yes, it's a music festival. Um, I'm not sure if they're going to be sticking with that specifically, but they are scheduled for an event on November fifteenth. Um, her name is Johanna Ramirez. And you can reach out to her at the email info at. O W S R C C dot org. And I also have a phone number for her as well.
O W S R C C dot org.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, phone number?
Four zero seven, three six five, six five zero zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, the reason I was asking about that when I thought it was the arts is that one of the therapies that is available to veterans is art therapy. And I was thinking maybe we could in, ask them to include a veteran.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, it, I'm, just to let you guys know, I'm gonna call and see if there's any ability, like if they just had, if it's all professional people coming in or or what. If we could somehow encourage Winter Springs veterans that may be musically inclined or, I, I don't know. I'm just gonna call and see what the event is now and I'll give you guys an update the next time we meet.
Okay.
Okay, so it may not be for this year, but maybe in the future. Okay.
Is this event gonna be held in Winter Springs or?
Yes, Central Winds Park.
Central Winds.
Central Winds Park.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, the next was twenty twenty-six meeting dates. Um, when, when do we, when do you guys normally, is it always a certain?
Twenty-five or twenty-six?
Twenty-six. We already have the twenty-five meeting dates.
Oh, okay.
Um, so for twenty-six, your parameters for your meetings, um, are quarterly. And they are January, April, July, October meetings. So they're the first quarter, quote unquote, of the year. Um, and you meet the second Thursday of every mon, of those months. Um, so I have the dates for you if you'd like.
January, April, July, October.
And October, so it's January eighth, if I look correctly, April ninth, July ninth and October eighth.
The second Thursday, is it always five thirty?
Yes, ma'am, as far as we have it.
Okay, I just want to make sure our current folks have it because we start planning out and.
Yes, ma'am, and usually, uh, to be honest with you, uh, the last meeting of the mu, of the, your last meeting of the year is usually when we talk about those things. If there is any changes, no, you're fine, more than a year. Um, and, you know, making sure that that works for you guys and and things. Because you, you really kind of set your own schedule, so at one point it was a different schedule, so this is something that works best for you guys. If you have any issues with the time, things like that, just let us know.
at one point it was a different schedule. So this is something that works best for you guys. If you have any issues with the time, things like that, just let us know. Um, but we wanted to make sure it fit for everybody's schedule.
Okay. So I have a, a follow-on question, and this is just a generic question. If someone, um, is in their term and decides that they do not have the time to be able to devote to it, what is the process for saying thank you, uh, uh, and resigning their term?
Um, so they can just let us at the City Clerk Department know. Um, we would then relay the information to, if there's, if it's a seat or if it's at large, we relay it to the commission. And if we have received any applications, we relay, you know, relay the opening at that point. So all they have to do is let us know that they've chosen to resign either in an email, uh, phone call. We prefer it in written just because, you know, it's
Right.
better to show something instead of just saying, oh, they said that they would rather, rather be resigned, but you can let us know, you can let your commissioner know, um.
Is there a, like a black mark, like, like if you resign, you can never be part of a board again, or is it?
Oh, no, 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 man. If it doesn't fit with your schedule currently and you decide, you know, in two years you would like to come back, by all means.
Okay, I just wanted to ask the question.
Of course.
Thank you.
Um, speaking of dates, when is our next meeting, October ninth?
Yes.
October ninth.
Give me one second.
Second Thursday, October ninth.
Okay, um, that is the Marine Corps Convention.
October ninth. So that's two of you. We need four for a quorum. Can the rest of us come in?
And I'll be in Spain.
One, two, three, four. That leaves just four of us.
Well, we could, um, if it's, since it's decided potentially, yeah, we could potentially reschedule it for a different date. Um, uh, probably shoot for, kind of similar to what we did last time, maybe the next, the following Thursday, if that works for everybody. Um, so it's October ninth.
No, that would be the sixteenth.
The sixteenth. What about a Tuesday? We went from a Thursday to a Tuesday last time.
Let me see.
October fourteenth?
Give me one second.
October fourteenth. That would be good for me.
You'll still be in Spain.
Well, what's the date you're talking about now?
October fourteenth.
No, I'll be here.
You'll be here?
October four, yes, I'll be, I'll be here.
It's the Marine Corps League meeting.
So that's one, well, you're meeting two.
Cause I'm sergeant at arms.
Okay. Uh, anyone else have an issue with, okay, is there a different, what else might be available that week?
Could we move it up to, instead of later, how about earlier, like the seventh?
You'll be in Spain.
No.
October seventh.
No, I'll be here. I'm, no, I'll still be here.
October seventh, at the end, yes. October seventh, Paul?
I'm good with October seventh.
Is it open and available?
Yes, ma'am, as far as I can tell.
Well, I've locked it in my calendar, so it's.
So it might be just one.
That's okay. I mean, it's one of those things that.
October, yeah, not November.
October seventh. We request to change October's meeting to October seventh.
Normally, if that, just so you're aware, um, if that does come to the case of where we realize that we're not going to have a quorum for a meeting, we can easily reschedule. We'll send out a meeting to make sure, like this, or sorry, send out an email to make sure everybody's available. And, and we would choose some dates like that. So beautiful, awesome. Easier for me.
October seventh, and at five thirty. Yes.
That's cool.
Beautiful. I've lost track of where we are in the agenda.
Uh, that was technically. Before.
Pretty much.
The next one is reports.
Reports.
October the seventh, right?
Does anyone have any reports, anything? I don't think we asked anybody for information last time.
Um, the report section's really, if you, you know, kind of similar to, uh, if you want to bring additional things up for the next meeting. Um, if you want to relay anything like events that you know your, uh, external, uh, I was going to say clubs.
Agencies.
Yeah, thank you. I was like, the clubs is not a correct word. Um, external, uh, agencies are holding to let the others know, things like that is really.
Tell me about the Gold Star thing again, the date.
It's in, I don't know the date yet. I have to go check on it. It's in September.
How about Patriot Day? Are you guys doing something for Patriot Day?
Yeah, we're doing something. I don't know.
So that's September eleventh. Is it normally in the morning?
Yes, eleven eleven is when we usually do it.
At eleven in the morning?
Yep. And city normally does something too.
Yep. Well, I just want to make sure, because if I'm coming to the, that August eleventh commission meeting, I want to make sure they know about the nine eleven issue. Um, I mean, they know the issue, but I'm, but there's something available at the VFW. Anything Marine Corps League doing the next few months besides celebrating being a Marine?
That's, that's, that's it.
That's it?
That's it. That's life.
What about?
I got some, I'm confused. What is the first week in August for the Marine Corps? They're having a big celebration in Washington DC.
Birthday? Uh, they're, they're starting their two hundred and fifty.
No, that's in November.
That's in November. It might have something to do with Ton Haver.
With who?
Ton Haver, where the Marine Corps was made, the bar.
It's the bar that, it might be an anniversary of the date that it was.
Marines come from all over the country. It's in, I'm going to it because I'm a associate member of the first Marine Division.
I'd have, I have to look it up to see what it is, but there is.
Everybody's going to be there. I mean, the, anyway.
DC?
But it's re, it's.
And it's August?
It's a retired thing though, but it's supposed to be the Marine Corps birthday.
No.
Anyway, all right, I'll, I'll look, I'll look it up in, in, uh, on the internet.
How about the auxiliary? Is there anything, is that what you guys call VFW auxiliary?
Yeah, that's what it's called.
Is there anything going on different that you know going on? How about the post, Kim? Anything going on? Anything Seminole County wise? Are they doing a stand down this fall? Have you heard?
They normally do something out here unless it's raining.
I don't know.
A stand down.
Oh, not that I know of.
No stand down schedule?
I haven't heard of anything.
Probably not with KJ leaving. Okay.
Right.
All right, so VFW, nine eleven.
Well, the post will, our post will also have nine eleven, or the Patriot Day, I'm sorry.
Patriot Day, two forty, but that's not franks, you know what I mean? That's what we don't.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah. All right. Anything else for reports? All right, the section is public input. Do you have any input for us? No?
Well, what, what I was going to suggest a few minutes ago, would that be public input?
Oh, yeah, under your, yeah, you could, whatever you wanted to raise, you could raise it now as a.
Yes.
You had an issue, you wanted to talk about.
You want to, you want to explore a new.
Yeah, I want to explore a new event. It could be around Veterans Day, but hopefully sooner than Veterans Day. Maybe not this year, but next year. Do a veteran social, veteran get together, whatever you want to call it. We have several veterans.
Organizations.
Organizations. The veteran service officer, veterans organizations, pretty much anybody to do with veterans, get them together in a park and do a big social, tents, whatever, maybe get food trucks there for the day, whatever, you know, whatever we can do to get the veterans in the park so they can get the information that we can give them all at one time with all the different veteran organizations.
So we did that, something like that at, um,
Right.
the, the other American Legion.
And it was a good thing.
Yeah, it was a good thing. And we had booths set up. We had lawyers over there that can help people with claims.
That's, that's the stand down.
Yeah.
That's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, that's what it's called.
Yeah, we set up a booth, you guys were over there, everybody was over there.
Oh, you're talking about the Veterans, uh, Appreciation Lunch?
No.
No.
No?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about the stand down. You're talking about a stand down that we gave over.
Yeah, the Department of Health and Human Services.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that, that's normally a, uh, county sets that up.
Is it?
It's, yeah, because then they can get DHS, they can get lots of different, so, but if, when the next Seminole County one is organized, we definitely want to.
Yeah, we'll get it over here.
Get it, not, not necessarily get it over here, but let people here know.
Yeah.
Because they, you know, they actually had here, if you have this flyer, you can get on the bus for free to go over there and get it, so. So we need to all keep our ear to the ground to see when they're, they might be having another one.
I, I tried, Paul.
So we don't want to do one here then?
Yeah.
We don't have the resources. We don't have, because that one included like dental, medical, um, vet for that. There, there's not a facility here that would, would do that.
Oh, yeah, to that extent, but I mean, for information wise.
Yeah, but someone has to organize this. I mean, like if you're going to use Central Winds Park, you may end up having to talk to the city about reserving an area there.
Well, you can rent Central Winds Park, right?
No, I understand, I know, but someone would have to spearhead this. I don't think, this is the place.
What's her name again?
To do this.
Hannah. I don't think that that, I mean, I think that we could.
It would have to be a social event.
I think we could do what you're talking about, Scott, in conjunction with another event. I don't think it needs to be its own event.
This is not something our, this council would, uh, would be able to push.
Right.
Unless we've already got someone that wants to do it, uh, some non, nonprofit organization that, uh, you know, like I'm, I'm involved in the Scottish Highland Games, um, and a whole bunch of other people do similar type things, but somebody has to organize. Then they come to the city and say, we'd like to use your facilities to, to do this. And then that conversation becomes very serious, um, to make it happen.
I think the question for Hannah was, is Central Winds Park available for rent or whatever? I mean.
Yes, so we do have rental fees for Central Winds Parks. Um, they are a little bit more on the expensive side. So for a full day park rental, as a resident fee, you're looking at a two thousand dollar park rental fee. Um, so these fees can be waived, but it does have to go through commission for approval for that. So you guys are welcome to present anything like that to commission for review. Um, there is two ways you could do it. You could go about it the rental fee way and there is someone that kind of runs it and the park is more like a rental facility. Or if you wanted the city to make this one of the city events, that's something that's also done like Fourth of July, Hometown Harvest, Winter Wonderland. Then that would also be something that's decided from commission. You could present it similarly to the banner program. And if it is approved through commission and that is something that they want city staff to pursue, um, then we would kind of work on it the same way as the banner program. We would make an outline for it, kind of present it to you guys. And then once that's finalized, we would be able to put it on the calendar for the next year.
So as a thought, who would come to this? Veterans, right? So maybe, um, the Veterans Day event that you do, is there a possibility that the organizations in the area could, would we want to have the VFW and all this set up at that event, maybe at the back, so that as they're waiting for the program to start, they could have their ten by ten tents available to, for information for people. Oh, I didn't know there was a VFW here. I didn't know there was Marine Corps League just down the street. I didn't know. Is that something that, um, the city might, uh, entertain? Is that maybe something that would, I mean, because you're trying to get information out to veterans of what's available, right?
Uh, veterans, veterans families, whoever.
So I would think that those, veterans and veterans families would come to a Veterans Day event. So that would be the event where I think that we would advertise. Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, but again, so you advertise it and then if you, if someone wants to, just advertising it is, that's not going to do it.
No, no, I'm saying.
Say, well, advertise it when someone like yourself would say, I'm going to contact eight or 10 different organizations, like the news, food vendors, uh, they'll rent tents. Once you've got the two thousand dollars, they rent tents and then you have different tents for all kinds, and it becomes a big social event for whatever it is that you want to make it. Uh, but, but getting it started is the way, it's like taking the step, first step forward. If you don't take first step forward properly, it's not going to go anywhere. And this is much bigger than us just saying, let the city advertise, we're going to have a social event in the park. Uh, because they're not going to support spending a lot of time.
Resources.
And resources to make this happen. We're the ones, or not this council, but the veterans organizations.
Okay, well, how, just, and what you're saying, how many veteran councils are sitting right here at different chapters? Four?
Yeah.
That's four right there, they can be there.
But you're committing them without asking them.
Well, I know that. My question was, could, could we do it?
Well, you do it outside of this, outside of this committee.
Yes.
Absolutely. You can.
No, because we can't talk to each other outside this committee.
About things that are discussed here. I think if we want to.
If you want to have a social event.
Okay, okay, don't worry about it.
You can do it. This is not a, this is not a sunshine violation. It's.
Ain't going to worry about it.
Okay. Thank you, Hannah, for that. So.
We want to do stuff for veterans, but they don't, veterans don't want to do it. That's fine.
So, do you want to address maybe having, uh, information at Veterans Day, or do you think that's not appropriate? Do you want to see if that might be something they're willing to do or not?
I would say have information tend at Veterans Day.
Veterans Day itself is going to be too busy. Everybody's going to be doing everything and you're not going to have time to come set up tents and things like that.
I just wanted to ask the question.
That's why my suggestion was before that, you know, to have it on a Saturday or whatever. I mean, it didn't have to be on Veterans Day. It, it would probably even be good to do it totally opposite of Veterans Day, to get people back in the mind of veterans, not just veterans on Veterans Day.
Right. Well, I would say if you have an outside agency that wants to coordinate that, I mean, that doesn't, doesn't preclude us.
Seminole County might want to get on board with that.
Yeah.
That's what they do their Veterans Day lunch for.
Right.
So, okay. Um, so I guess we're at adjournment.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
So when emails are sent out, if you don't get a response from ev, any, everyone, do you cancel? You don't cancel the meeting, do you?
No, sir. We don't cancel the meeting unless we have, we've gotten a response that more than the quorum cannot be here. That's the only time we would ever pre-cancel it, or if something came up, you know, something like staff couldn't be here, things like that. So if you, we don't receive an email response? No, we do not cancel it just off of that.
Okay, all right.
And what I did, I think it's okay, that I can just say, are you coming? Because that, we're not discussing anything here. I just do it, and I, I'm going to add you two to say, just a reminder, tonight I'll see you, you know, that sort of thing.
Yep.
Yeah, really with sunshine, it's that we would prefer you not to discuss things that you might want to bring in front of this board, things that you will be making decisions on. By all means, if you, you know, like Christian said, if you see each other at the grocery store, don't be afraid to say hi to each other, like, don't shy away and run away. Um, it's more of things that you're wanting to, you know, make motions and decisions on, um, that we prefer you not to talk about, you know, behind closed doors, as the quote says. Um, this is really the main thing for that.
Thank you.
Well, welcome to our two new members. Thank you for volunteering your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Oh, hey, great. Looking forward. Thank you to the city for, for supporting us and consuming our organizations.
Yeah, I, I'd like to have the last.
The last word.
No, not last. I detect a certain amount of confusion here about what, what we're supposed to be doing here. There's nothing to prevent any of us from going to our respective posts and saying, we should have a big celebration someplace. Why don't we talk to the county? Let's talk to the state. Let's talk to this. Let's think about having it at some location in central Florida or in Seminole County. And, and you do that. And then you can, then you come here to the city if you really wanted to and say, we're going to have a big event. And, and how can you help support us? But we can't start with, we're going to want, we want a big event and we want you to organize it. So how can you support it? It's, we've got to put the horse before the cart.
Well, you're putting, you're putting, that's what you're doing. I just asked, would it be possible? I didn't ask, would they do it?
No, anything's possible, but.
And I, I was expecting the board to back it up, saying, hey, we can go to our different units and say, hey, can we do this? And, and you approve it in yours, then we approve it in ours. Then we get together and have a meeting and start setting it up.
I mean, there's nothing to prevent you from doing that.
Yeah, I got no problem with that.
It doesn't take rocket science to figure this out.
I got no problem with that.
We have ten thousand member board to figure it out.
Right.
It's something we can do. And then they said, if they could do it, you know, just, my question was, could they do it? Or give us the space to do it?
Yeah, it's, it's able to. I mean, same thing like with the banner program.
But the answer to your question is yes, come to us with a proposal.
You have to have the information and say, can you help us with this?
That would be my question.
That would be my answer was, yeah, if you can come up with a proposal, get together with your, your individuals, come, come to a proposal and we can put that before the committee.
Because I think, I personally think that would be a good thing for Winter Springs.
Yeah.
You have the, the bit and, and you have to run with it now.
There you go.
Yeah, well, that's why I started here, just to see if we have the space available. Now, since I'm a member of every one of these committees now, or every one of these.
You've got to find someone in each one.
I can go to each person, say, hey, would, would this per, would your group be willing to set something up? Would your group be willing to set us up? Call Seminole County and see if they can bring somebody over, get a hold of Food Courts. I mean, it's, we got plenty of time to do it. It's just my question was, could we do it?
Well, you do it next year, you'll drive yourself crazy trying to do it this year.
Oh, yeah.